Okay, folks, please sit down. We're gonna start soon. Please come in, be quiet, and sit down. Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to convene our meeting. Could you please take a seat? I'm glad you're all greeting each other, but we have to be on time.
There we go. Terry's coming back. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellingham City Council meeting for Monday, May 8th. I call this meeting to order. First, I've got some announcements. The first announcement is a bit of a change. We were scheduled to have a town hall meeting on Monday, May 15th at 7:00 o'clock over at the Mount Baker Theater in the Encore Room. We talked about it this afternoon. It looks like there's a lot more interest in people coming to that event, so we're gonna move it to a larger venue, and we're gonna add it on another half hour, so more people will have a chance to speak. Unfortunately, what this means is that we will have to postpone that event, and we'll reschedule it hopefully next month, hopefully in June, so please stay tuned for that. Coming up on Monday, May 22nd, at 7:00 PM, the City Council will host a public hearing on the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. It's a planning document. We review it and approve it each year. On Monday, June 5th, at 7:00 PM, the City Council will host a public hearing to consider a comprehensive plan amendment relating to the Barkley Neighborhood, and actually the city's park plans in that neighborhood. Also, on that same evening, Monday, June 5th, 7:00 PM or shortly thereafter, the City Council will host a public hearing to consider a comprehensive plan to the Cordada Neighborhood. I'm sorry, that's the one that has to do with the city park. My mistake. Two public hearings that Monday. We will now then move into our public hearings. We're gonna do things a little bit differently.
Are you doing roll call, or are you doing...
Oh, no. Did I skip? There it is. Would everyone please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I, to the witness, is a right, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No excuses for that one. Roll call, please.
April Barker, here.
Dan Hamel, here.
Jane Knudsen, here.
Michael Lillquist, here.
Roxanne Murphy, here.
Pinky Vargas, here.
Teri Bornammon, here.
Thank you.
Okay, like I said, we have actually five public hearings scheduled. We're gonna do things a little bit differently, in the sense that we're gonna have staff get presentations on the first two, with both have to do with utility easements, and then we'll open up the hearing to both those items at once. If you want to, you can speak to one or both of those. We'll take comment on both of those, and then close those hearings after the comment period is over, and then we'll go on to the next three hearings, and I'll describe that as well. Go ahead and begin with a presentation, I think, by Ted Carlson.
Yes, thank you. Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. As Council President Lillquist mentioned, we have two public hearings related to easement relinquishment. This is something that council has seen several times over the last three or four months, where the city vacates right-of-way many, many years ago, and upon vacation, we retain an easement for utilities. At the time, we don't know whether or not we're gonna actually need the easement, so we retain it to see how the utility system will develop in the area, and then if we ever are requested to relinquish the easement by the property owner that's encumbered, we'll take a look at the area and see whether or not the easement is surplus to our needs. If it is surplus, RCW's lay out the process for the city to relinquish the easement, which requires council action after a public hearing. So that's why we're here tonight. We have two, and then if the council would take public comment and just ask the folks commenting which easement they're speaking about, we can combine the two. So the first one has to do with property at 1-5, 1-4, 12th Street, and area map here on the overhead. We have Larrabee here, Donovan. Here's the parcel in question, and across Lot 7 right now, where the red circle is, there's an easement. It's a utility easement that actually currently has a private stormwater main in there. It's not a publicly-owned asset, but it's a private stormwater facility within the public easement. The property owner has requested, for development purposes, that the city relinquish the easement. Staff has been working with them, and worked on a plan that would remove the private stormwater facility. The developer would be required to construct a new public stormwater main in the existing alley, which would serve the purpose of the private stormwater main, as well as handle some stormwater issues in the alley, so it's an actual better solution from a stormwater perspective. This would have to be done prior to the city relinquishing the easement, and that's all laid out in the resolution in your packet, that through a public facilities contract, which is the city's method for ensuring that public infrastructure gets built to a certain standard and then inspected. Once the infrastructure's built, the new stormwater main in the alley, city inspects it and accepts it, then we would go ahead. If council does approve tonight, we would then go ahead and go through the process to relinquish the easement after the fact. So that's the first one. Again, this is brought forward to the city by the property owner to help with infill development. The second location... That shows up. So the second location in the downtown area between North State Street and North Forest Street, this section of East Laurel, where the purple is there. It's about a six-foot-wide section of easement that the city still retains. Many years ago, the city vacated the right-of-way, and as I mentioned before, retained the easement. There are no utilities in this easement at this time. Again, this is brought forward by this property owner here that has a vacant parcel. They would like to redevelop it. There's actually a structure here that's built over the easement, so this would also clean up some actual conflicts in terms of easements and structures on the easement. Again, all of these go through an internal review process between planning, public works, parks, to make sure that the easement is, in fact, surplus to our needs, and again, staff's recommending that council take action to pass the resolution to relinquish these easements. So, those are the two areas. I was asked, why are these coming forward now? I mean, for many, many years, we never had any of these coming forward to council. I think it is a product of infill development. We're seeing lots that are within the city-built environment, that have encumbrances that previously may not have been enough motivation to develop, and now people are willing to do things to free up those lots for development. So I think there's a few more that I know are in process that will be coming. The second part, I was asked, can some of these things be done administratively, and RCW's pretty clear about, this is really considered surplus of property, even though there's no dollar value. The city doesn't pay for these easements, so we don't charge people when we vacate the easements. It's still a property transaction that requires council action, so that's why they come forward to you. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer about either one of these.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for the council before we open the hearing? Okay, I'll go ahead and open the hearing. For the 12th Street, and by the way, if you signed up the wrong place, that's fine. Just correct us and tell us. For the 12th Street easement, I have Jacob Malloy signed up. Okay, mistake on Jacob's part. And then also I have Yasmina Van Loen. Okay, signed up the wrong place, that's fine. And then for the Laurel Street one, I have Lynn Lor, I think it is. Also, signed up the wrong place, that's fine. If you're here for the public comment, you can comment at that time. Is there anybody else who would like to come forward for the public hearing on either of these two easements? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring the hearing to a close and bring it back to the council. We have two items before us.
Second.
We have a motion on the first one, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing release of the utility easement on 12th Street. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. The second item?
I move to pass the second item.
Second.
And then we have a motion to pass the second one, which is a resolution authorizing relinquishment of the Dakota easement previously retained by the city on a portion of East Laurel Street. Any discussion of this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0 unanimously. Thank you very much. That concludes those two matters. We got the lights up. So then, the next three items, also for public hearing, they were originally noticed together. They are three items from a small, what the staff is calling the running list, a very small code cleanups to do. They were then noticed, I think, individually. We're gonna go ahead and address them individually, three at a time, and then we'll open up the public hearing. Again, if you wanna speak to any of the three, come forward and do so. If anyone's signed up, I'll call on you, and you can comment on one, or two, or all three of them, if you'd like. Shall I start with you, Rick, or Kurt?
I'll introduce it, and then Kurt will present. We come before you this evening, council members, to present the Planning Commission's recommendation, as well as the staff background and research regarding the running list and minor code amendments. Planning Development Services Manager Kurt Nabafeld will present the background on the applications and the recommendation for Planning Commission.
Good evening. Kurt Nabafeld, Planning and Community Development Department. As Rick mentioned, we are hearing three different items tonight. These are minor code amendments to our Title 20, which is our land development ordinance, which includes zoning and development standards for properties. What we're here tonight is to look at three items that are on our running list. If you recall, we've created a running list of all the different code amendments that staff, the council, Planning Commission, or the mayor and administration have decided that we need to take a look at. What the running list is, is it's a way to record, retain, and consolidate all the amendments. So instead of having three separate public hearings throughout the year, we can consolidate it into one public hearing, like we're doing tonight, and we can consolidate the noticing requirements, the hearings as well. Essentially, as I mentioned, there are different ways or different folks that can add items to the running list of our code amendments, and that includes staff, the mayor, the city council, and the Planning Commission. As I mentioned, it's an efficient use of time. It does take a lot of staff resources in order to change development regulations. There are multiple notices. There are multiple public hearings that have to occur as well. So trying to consolidate all of this into one opportunity when we come forward, or sometimes two opportunities, depending on staff resources throughout the year, it's very efficient of our time and your time and the public's time. As I mentioned, our running list consists of multiple items. There are several things here. We've got some that we are also addressing on our 2017-2018 work program. As you can notice, there's a couple on here that talk about conditional use criteria and CIPA appeals. Those were both code amendments that came out of, or suggestions that came out of from our hearing examiner, so those have been added to the list as well. The proposed amendments that we're looking at tonight, there's three of them. The first one is dealing with fence materials between commercial and residential transition zoning. The residential transition zoning is one of a, it's relatively new zoning type, and it's found in all of our urban villages. The second one is unclassified uses in commercial and industrial zones. A lot of times, our codes are not comprehensive enough, and they don't list every single type of use, so we're creating a process that helps us evaluate those uses that aren't listed. And then the third one we're gonna look at tonight is Fairhaven building-mounted signage. In the Fairhaven Urban Village, we already have existing rules and regulations for signages, however. In this case, we wanted to make them a little bit more clear for people to So the first public hearing that we'll be addressing, or the first item in the public hearing that we'll be addressing tonight, is fencing materials between these transitional zones. Generally, our code is quite silent between fence materials. We've got rules and regulations, design regulations and standards for lighting. We've got design standards for the buildings, the facades. We've got site layout parameters as well, windows, but we don't really address signs in a very good manner. We do have rules, but it's just not enough to provide clarity for everyone involved. Sorry. We've found that chain linking, chain link fence has been used between commercial developments and these residential developments, and that's just not compatible with residential typically. We believe that our fencing rules should integrate with the building more. They should be a component of the building and reflect some of those other design criterias that we have. And they should also add visual interest and detailed materials and color. With that, we have specifically prohibited chain link fencing between these two different zones, because we didn't feel it was appropriate between a commercial and a residential zone. The second amendment that we're looking at tonight is this unclassified uses in commercial and industrial zones. As I mentioned, not all of our uses are listed in our tables. We try to do a comprehensive list. We try to include broad categories that will grab all of them, but we don't always find that that happens. For example, research and development, boat building, and recording studios. Those are things that we know people do, but they're not specifically listed in all of our code sections as to being permitted uses. We know that they provide the same types of impacts that other permitted and listed uses have, but because they're not specifically listed, it becomes somewhat of a challenge for staff, the applicant, property owners, to understand whether or not they are allowed in zones. So what we've decided is that, as all good codes, making decisions, you need to have criteria. We currently don't have that. What we'll do is we've established criteria to evaluate those impacts associated with those unlisted uses, looking at the traffic, the noise, and the light, and the odors. Those are all pretty typical impacts that are associated with different uses, and by comparing those from one use to the other, making sure that they're compatible or similar, then we should be able to allow those types of uses in these zones. As a part of the determination process, we'll determine whether they're permitted outright, or whether or not they're conditionally approved. The difference between those is a permitted outright, you can come forward, get your building permit, and go do, whereas with a conditional use, there's a different standard that has to be met, and there's a public hearing process that takes place in front of the hearing examiner. So the director will have the ability to determine, yes, these are similar impacts as other permitted uses, and you go down that avenue. If they're more consistent to conditional uses, things that need to go through, have this extra scrutiny, then they'll go through that conditional use process. The best thing about this is it standardizes the interpretations and gives us a criteria. As it stands now, it's somewhat challenging. We discuss the uses with applicants. We try to fit it in where we think it's appropriate, but we don't have a true defined process of making this determination with specific criteria, and that's what we're doing here, is adding those criteria to make this very standard, and it's repeatable. Then our third code change that we're looking at tonight deals specifically with building-mounted signage in Fairhaven area. As we know, these rules are still relatively new. We've had several buildings that have come down in Fairhaven, new buildings that have come down in Fairhaven. We have had several signs that people have proposed down in Fairhaven, but they just don't seem to be in character with, one, the building, the scale of the building, and the pedestrian environment. Some of these signs seem to be much larger than the pedestrian area and can overpower that. And remember, our urban villages, that's one of the key things that we're really looking at, is kind of that pedestrian interface with buildings. So, as I mentioned, we do have language in our existing code that talks about the signage, however, it's just not enough. We've struggled a couple times, the applicants have struggled a couple times to understand our code, and staff has implementing it. So, we believe that these additional standards will help clarify and make it easier for everyone. Again, appropriate size in relation to the building. We've set a limit on building-mounted signage at 12 square feet in area. One of the existing rules talks about that the signs should be similar to building styles. Well, most buildings are rectangular, so we felt having that specific language in there will help people understand exactly what we're trying to get. Again, we wanna emphasize the facade, and then make sure that they are consistent with our public works and building code requirements of being eight feet above the pedestrian area. Common theme with our code changes that were being proposed is predictability and standardization. Those are things that make it easier for all, not just staff, but also the public and our customers. That's one of the things that can be challenging with development codes, is trying to explain, well, this is what we were trying to go for. So adding these minor changes, we believe, makes things more predictable and clear to folks, and standard for everyone. As I mentioned, the Planning Commission also reviewed this. They also supported the changes and recommended that you approve all three different code changes tonight. With that, I'm here to answer any questions and open up to the public.
Okay. Kurt, are there any questions for Kurt on these amendments from the council?
I'll ask after.
Okay, we can come back to it afterwards. So, we'll now open up all three hearings. No one has apparently signed up to comment on any of these three. If anyone would like to come forward to comment on any of these recommendations, either on building-mounted signs, how to handle unclassified commercial industrial uses, or fencing material in transition areas, come forward right now. Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna close all three of the hearings and bring it back to the council for consideration of each individually. April?
So, I'm interested in the chain link regarding fence materials between residential and transition zoning, and if you had an opportunity to chat with officers that work with SEPTED, I imagine that there might be some reasons in certain areas where they would like a lot more visibility, and if that's the case, is it just chain link, or if the chain link were boxed within, like, a wood frame, or if it were hogwire, is that gonna be a problem? If it would be better for that crime prevention through environmental design?
We did talk to our police individuals about that. We also have two certified SEPTED reviewers on staff that went through training, and SEPTED is actually a requirement in some of our urban villages. So that's a typical review that we already do, such as hogwire. That was one that came up during the Planning Commission discussion as well, and that is not chain link, and that would be allowed, as long as it, again, we're going back to making sure that it fits the design of the building as well. So, SEPTED is something that we do evaluate in our projects, and wanna make sure that we're not creating places for people to hide and where it's not appropriate.
Terry?
Move approval of the ordinance for consideration, considering the sign code amendments to the Fairhaven Urban Village.
We have a motion before us to consider the ordinance to change the sign code for Fairhaven Urban Village. Is there any further discussion of this? I guess I just wanna say that we've had several people come to town, presenting how to make thriving downtowns, and one of the things they emphasize is really good signage. That bad signage kind of ruins the character, and good signage, these what they call blade signs that come out from the building that aren't lit up. You can have lots of them. They're individual, unique. They actually are a positive feature to adding to the vitality of a commercial area, and I think this is in line with that. Okay, all those in favor of passing this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 7-0. Roxanne?
As someone who can see a chain link fence from another business through my kitchen window, I would like to move that we would pass the ordinance regarding updates to fencing materials between commercial and residential zones and urban villages.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion before us to adopt the ordinance updating fencing material regulations between commercial and residential zones and urban villages. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes 7-0.
I have another question.
April, you have a question?
I'm interested in the unclassified uses in commercial and industrial zones. Did that come out of the commercial zoning practice that we had, looking at reforming the codes?
It didn't. This is something that staff has been doing for decades.
Yeah.
Actually, is trying to determine which uses are similar, and one of the things that we've found is that uses change. They change a lot quicker than our zoning code can, and this helps us be more reactive to those changing uses and how they impact situations.
We currently have in our zoning code the authority to make these interpretations. We're now providing criteriones, and that really is the clarification. When our legal staff were consulted on it, they welcomed having criteriones that you can base your judgment on, rather than using professional practice, or using past experience, or other codes.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Second. We have a motion before us to adopt code amendments establishing a process and criteria when evaluating unclassified uses in commercial or industrial zones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes 7-0. Thank you, everyone. That's five hearings in one night. Sure, they were short, but probably still a record. We'll now go on to our 15-minute public comment period. Terry, could you bring a sign-up sheet? So, for those of you who aren't familiar with our rules, there's 15 minutes we set aside. We give each person three minutes to come forward and address the council. This is our time to listen. We don't answer back any of your questions. We ask you to direct your comments to the council as a whole. No personal tax, no campaign endorsements, and no commercial endorsements either. Otherwise, it's pretty much whatever you'd like to say to us. I see several names signed up. We'll go through them right away. The first one, it's Teresa Mears, and then Sunny Meehan, I think, would be next. Teresa.
Good evening. Teresa Mears from Bellingham, and I just wanted to come and say thank you to the mayor, and the council, and all of the city employees who worked so hard on the, trying to get us a shelter, a low-barrier shelter. It's obvious that that wasn't meant to be in that location, and that's okay. I have to say, I was a bit bothered by the fact that we were gonna give the mission a 75-year lease on that property when we supposedly have a 10-year plan to end homelessness, so... Maybe we need to look at this differently. By the time we would have actually had a shelter, we'd be looking at one and a half to two years down the road for 200 mats on the floor, and other things. Today, you could buy the Shamrock Motel and 37 units for $1,300,000. Those units could pay for themselves, be affordable, reasonable rates. Many of our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness do have some income, and they could afford to pay something. What about the Mac Motel? There's another 32 units. I don't know if it's for sale, but it probably could be. There's a new 47-unit building for sale, not finished yet. 47 studios, $5,300,000. $765,000, it'd be about 15% down payment. Yes, we need a low-barrier shelter with showers and laundry, and places for the service peoples to meet with the clients, but maybe it doesn't have to be 200 beds. Maybe it could be smaller if we did something now to move forward. We can't wait a couple more years. We need to take some emergency action. Our landlords, our property owners, need to get on board. We need to address this issue. Again, thank you for all your work, and please don't stop.
Thank you, Teresa. Next up will be Sunny, I think it says Meehan, followed by Lisa Fierino, and then Amy Glasser. And by the way, the timer's for three minutes, but when the buzzer goes off, you still have 30 seconds to finish up.
My name is Sunny Meehan, and I am from Bellingham. Although, it's my understanding that the people of Bellingham have previously rejected the idea of a new jail by referendum, it seems as though it's being introduced again. the idea of a new jail by referendum, it seems as though it's being introduced again. So, I would simply like to urge the council to have a public hearing on the notion of building a new jail. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, Lisa Farino, followed by Amy Glasser, and then Clint Lincoln would be third.
Hi, my name is Lisa Farino. I also live in Bellingham, and I'm also aware of the plans to potentially bring yet another ballot to the voters about building a new jail, and I really want to urge the council not to move forward with a plan to increase our sales taxes and to build a new jail yet. The Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force has been working really hard to come up with a lot of ideas to actually reduce the number of people who are incarcerated in Whatcom County, and we need time to implement those plans. We need time and we need money to implement those plans. I think over time, those plans are going to save us a lot of money, and they're also going to make our communities safer, and they're going to reduce the amount of beds we even need in our local jail. But if we move forward and build this jail now, we're going to fill it. We're not going to be trying to follow these recommendations to reduce incarceration once we have a bigger jail. I think the other problem we have is we have a jail right now that's falling apart. It is not safe for the people who are in there, whether they're the people who are incarcerated, or the people who are working in there. And it doesn't matter if we build a new jail or not, while that a new jail would be being built, that jail needs to be fixed anyway, to be safe and humane for the workers and safe and humane for the people who are staying in there. So, why are we not moving forward with a plan to simply fix the jail that we have and move forward with these other plans to deal with our homeless problem, deal with people who are mentally ill and providing actual treatment for them, dealing with drug addiction? These are the things that we need to be putting our focus on. And I also think that it's, it's really a disgrace that we have so many people who are being held, they're Bellingham residents, who are being held because they are too poor to make bail. They're being shipped out to Yakima, and their only crime is not having the money to make bail. They're accused of misdemeanors, most of them. People accused of misdemeanors don't belong in jail. These aren't people who've gone out and murdered somebody. These are people who've committed low-level, nonviolent crimes, and they're taking up jail beds, and we're destroying their lives by keeping them incarcerated because they're too poor to make bail. We have a similar problem with incarcerating people simply because they are too poor to afford the fines that they owe, and if we start to deal with these problems, we're not going to need to spend $110 million or more building a jail out in the county. And being out in the county is also a really bad location for a jail. If you're incarcerated out in the county, there's no way for your family to get to visit you if they don't have a car. So, we should keep our jail centrally located where it is now and just dramatically reduce the number of people that are in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Amy Glasser, followed by Clint Lincoln.
Hello. Amy Glasser from Bellingham. I sat at the stakeholders' jail meeting on Friday, and I heard people talking and working really, really hard for many months on how to appropriate the money on how to build this jail. And at the end of the meeting, and in the end of the whole group, it appears that the meeting got disbanded, the group got disbanded, and everybody agreed to the percentage of what they would pay for in a new jail. I'm, I'm talking about this because the mayor of Linden specifically said, "Well, we have here a $110 million jail. This is what I'm approving of our city spending. We'll spend, actually, we'll give in a little more for Ferndale." And he said, "You know, if you proposed a 700-bed jail, I wouldn't be going for this. If you proposed a 300-bed jail, I'm not sure if I'd even go for that." So, what we did was, you, the, the committee, the group, spent 10 months coming up with appropriations of how you were going to pay for a jail, when you haven't decided what kind of jail you want or need, where it should be, and who it should be for. So, if you decide, we hope appropriately, that we don't need a big new jail, then all of that work is for none, because the mayor said if it wasn't the 470, 80-bed jail, he probably wouldn't go for it, which kind of screwed up the whole 10 months that y'all worked, well, not you all, but that the committee worked on it. So, I'm really confused as to why there would be a group put together to decide on how to pay for a jail when there hasn't been the public hearing to decide if we even want a jail. So, I'm pretty confused about that, especially when all studies show that being in jail does nothing to prevent the, the community from being safer, or the people in jail from getting any better. The things that help, the things that save money, our diversion programs, either avoiding getting arrested in the first place by triaging through mental health and services and housing, which is an incredible prevention for crime, or if they are in the jail system, triaging for mental health services and substance abuse services through drug court, family court, and the mental health court, which we, of course, have found saves dollars for every dollar you spend on it. So, it just makes sense to ask the community first, then look at the statistics from the Vera Institute, which shows how much better we can do by not incarcerating people and saving lots of money. And basically, going back to the drawing board.
Thank you. Next up is Clint Lincoln. By the way, we do have a rule against no clapping, and maybe this is, maybe not good. There are silent ways of showing your approval. I'm trying to enforce these rules because we've had problems in the past sometimes. I just want to make sure that we're always enforcing the same rules. Thank you. Thank you. Clint Lincoln, followed by Joy Gilfillan, and then Irene Morgan. Clint, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm also here to speak about the larger jail. I think it's a horrible idea. The goal of law and justice system should be to reduce crime. Will building a larger jail do that? I would think not. If they build this larger jail, they'll have to fill it, or they're going to catch a lot of criticism, and that's just completely backwards of trying to reduce crime. No means no. We already said no to the jail tax. Is there even a needs assessment for this facility? I understand about population growth. I've lived here for 37 years, and I do agree that Bellingham is growing massively, but to me, that doesn't mean we need to lock up more people. That means we need to educate more. We need incarceration prevention, which they are working on, and I applaud everybody who is a part of that. They're doing a great job. Stoked on that. We need more restorative justice. We should be building a restore life center. We need help for mental health patients. Let's be progressive, proactive. Let's create more jobs by helping people in our community, not locking them up. We need to stop punishing the taxpayers for our flawed system. In Wacom County, I know this is Bellingham, but in Wacom County, the prosecutorial discretion is completely out of bounds on both ends of the spectrum massively. We're not talking just the fact that they're locking up the poor and mentally ill. We're talking about a prosecutor that is simultaneously ignoring massive, major felony crimes that are committed by wealthy businessmen here in our community. I am a victim of that. I've been doing a lot of research in Wacom Community's law and justice system, and it's just flawed, and it's destructive. The Restorative Community Coalition founder Irene Morgan and the president of the Restorative Community Coalition, Joy Gilfillan, have provided many plans and solutions. A lot of them are right here in this, "Stop punishing taxpayers, start rebuilding community." I don't know if you guys have seen this, but I have a copy of it, if you'd like it. We need to start implementing this stuff, funding this stuff, not a bigger jail. We need to fund the solutions. Please fund these solutions before you try and pass a tax on a jail that we don't need and we do not have a needs assessment for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Clint. Joy Gilfillan, followed by Irene Morgan, and then Lynn Lohr.
I love your 30-second thing. You're saving yourselves time. Thank you for the complex work you've been doing on so many complex subjects. You guys are heroes, truly. Even though you guys take a lot of flak for a lot of the things that don't go right, I get, because I sort of tried it, how complex and how difficult it is to do this work. The work that the city of Bellingham has been doing the past couple of years to help with the jail reduction has been absolutely stunning, and thank you, Mayor Kelly. Thank you to all of you, the attorneys and all of you, for helping to support the reduction of the number of people going into that jail. It is phenomenal work, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm asking that you give yourselves time to continue this work and to implement the recommendations of the Institute, the Vera Institute that's coming forward. They did a mapping process when the, with the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force that identified 38 different ways that we're sort of bottlenecked in the county, in the law and justice system, and they're doing research to come up with, how can you fix it? Are they really bottlenecks? And how much money would it save us as a county if we were to implement some of the changes? Getting rid of bail is just one of those things, although that's a big one. Yes, I was watching the stakeholders' meeting yesterday, and I think it would be very, very unconscionable to try to pass another sales tax, or for this council or this legislative body to recommend passing a sales tax, when two years ago, we absolutely said no, and there's dozens of reasons that we said no. But the biggest reason to say no now on it is the fact that you have a jail right downtown. That jail needs to be repaired. It must be repaired. It will cost between 10 and 30 million to completely rebuild it. It was designed on purpose, and the 2000 or 2002 jail, Law and Justice Council actually recommended that you rebuild that jail back then. They, at that time, called it a first-class security facility, and there were plans at that time to build a fifth floor. There's also land right across the street, both sides, that could be built on, that has not been analyzed in a needs assessment. That land absolutely could house a facility in downtown Bellingham, and it would stop the migration of our government services and all our bail bondsmen and all of our other support services out of downtown, out into the county. It also would save us an enormous amount of money. We would not have to pass a tax. You could use the downtown facility for high-security violent offenders. You could use the Division Street property for less, less maintenance, all of your misdemeanors, and people who don't have to be kept in. A high facility could be used out there. You could expand your restorative justice, your reentry programs, all kinds of programs. If you move out into the county, the probability that that land, it's a 40-acre parcel, that could become a deportation immigration center.
Time is up. Thank you. Next is Irene Morgan, followed by Lynn Lohr, Lohr, I can't quite tell, and then Kelly Krieger.
Good evening. Irene Morgan, Whatcom County. Again, I'd like to thank you all for your diligent work. You can be proud of yourselves for taking the number of people you have out of your, from your residents, out of the jail. Yakima's not the best place, but your, your numbers are coming down dramatically, and, and Lummi also is doing that. You know, when we continue to do these kinds of things, when we do what's right for the people, and the justice system can be corrected. I've been spending lots of time in the courts recently, and for all of you who are here in the audience, I, I suggest that you just take a couple of days and go sit, if you can, and see what happens. The continuances are just enormous. At least half of the 30-some that I watched today were continued. This doesn't make sense to me. That's why our folks are, are still in jail. The misdemeanors, the, the poor people, and I, I met with some people that, that work in the court system not long ago, and they know the system's broken. In fact, I've spoken to many of you, and we all know the system's broken. Let's fix it. The rules were changed to what they are now. Let's change them. It's really easy. We change our mind. And I'm really tired of doing this work. I've been doing this for 10 years, and yes, things have changed, and thank goodness you have heard us. And I'm, I'm not going to give up. I'm not going away. You can't make me quit. But I'm really tired of doing this, and I know we're better than this. We are so much better than this. So, let's do it. Let's just do it. And I want to thank all the people who have come forward to support us in the coalition. We haven't been a true coalition because, because of the work we do, it's not popular, and besides, all those folks in jail and prison, they're bad folks, and we have to be protected from them. Well, my experience is, they're not bad folks. What's bad is our system and the way they are arrested, and the, I call them the forced users of our system. They are arrested, and they are considered guilty, and they, it even comes out in the newspapers that they are drunk or using drugs, when actually, some people have medical issues. Is that fair? Let's fix it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Irene. Up next is Lynn, followed by Kelly Krieger, and then Amy Pachov, or Pachow, Pachov.
Yes, my name is Lynn Lohr. It's L-O-H-R. Sorry, I'm going to have to do better on that.
I can see it now.
Thank you for your work. I, I think that the most powerful words in any language, according to Masuro Emoto, who took photographs of frozen water, and you, as you all know, were made up of water, the most important words are, "Thank you," and "I love you." I do, I'm thankful to you, and I do love you, in the Agape sense of loving everybody as your neighbor. I was a teacher first, and then I became a chaplain. In, in the process of becoming a chaplain, I took training in substance abuse, training, substance abuse training. So, I've worked with my share of people in the hospital who were in substance abuse units. They were there full-time to try to become better, and I can tell you that they're people like us, and they got addicted, sometimes like we do, in coffee. I'm reading a book about cheese now. It's addictive. The, it's put in the mother's milk of animals and a human being, human beings' milk, to keep the child close and interested. And so, we are eating cheese, and many of us to our own detriment, but that's a little bit of an aside from addiction. I do think that our jail needs to be fixed. I was an emergency chaplain. They paged me, and I came, and I tried to fix things right away. It just meant staying with somebody, but at least I went right away. I think we need to have a new appreciation for the word "emergency." When something is awry in a jail that is threatening someone's life in any way, I think that's an emergency. Maybe we could think about that a little bit and come to that conclusion. I don't think we need a new jail. I think, what if we just got rid of the, the, what is it, the White House? If we just said, "That's too old, you know, let's get rid of the White House. It's too old, you know, put it aside. It doesn't meet our needs anymore." No. We hold the things valuable that meet our needs, and if somebody has an influence on us to make something new, then we kind of are interested in throwing it aside. That's, I think, how it works. When I came to Bellingham, I was really shocked by all of the bail stores, the bail offices. I thought, wow, they must have a lot of people arrested here, although I go to bed early. I didn't see a lot of this, but I hear a lot of it now, and I'm shocked that the people are put in jail and kept there. And the continuances that I just heard about, the word "profit," we have, the profit, the word "profit," according to my studies, means someone will tell you what to do in the future, not what will happen, but what you can do, and you can use their information. You have prophets, the ones who have spoken before me. Please listen.
Thank you very much. Now, we're gone beyond our 15-minute public comment period. If there's no objection, I'm just going to try to finish up. There's about six, eight more names on here. Okay, so Kelly Krieger is next, followed by Amy Pachov, and then Robert Leeb.
Sorry, I don't need three minutes. I do need to read it from my phone, though. Thank you all for considering this and taking the time to listen to us. I don't think that the people, I think that people of Bellingham need to know that all the other alternatives to incarceration aren't being considered before we look at this jail. I'm not sure I know that, and I'm not sure all of us believe that's happened yet. I think the facility is going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money, and I think we deserve to know why that's necessary. It's my understanding that the proposal for a large jail was rejected a couple of years ago, and I'm concerned that the planning process for this new facility and the motives of those planning it have been less than transparent. I don't understand it, and I'm sure a lot of people don't really understand what we're doing here again. I would personally love to see more resources for poor and homeless residents and a consideration of alternatives to low-level crimes. I don't have the numbers for what we have incarcerated as low-level crimes, but I don't feel like incarceration is appropriate or always necessary. Removing perpetrators of low-level and nonviolent crimes to jails creates hardships for families, and it costs our community a lot of dollars. I'd really like to be assured that that's being examined. Please take the time to carefully consider the impacts of this decision. It's an, it's a decision that will impact our community for many years to come, and It's a decision that will impact our community for many years to come, and it deserves our attention. It reflects our attitudes towards the vulnerable members of our community, and it really deserves your careful attention. Thank you. Look, I'm early.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Amy, followed by Robert Lieb, and then Jordan Lieb.
Hi, Amy Pachov. I live at Gusberry Point on the Lummy Reservation. So I thought we had voted no on this, so when I found out it was still something we had to think about, I tried to do as much research as I could, as just a citizen who's never been in that jail, thank goodness. But, so I called the sheriff, and I spoke with the sheriff, and I spoke with whoever's second-in-command under him. I looked at plans online, and I spoke with my neighbors who have been through that jail. And I told them what I thought about it, and I said, "Hey, I'm going to this council meeting. What would you like me to say? You've been in that jail, you've been through the system." And everyone echoed the same sentiments that I have, which is that they'd like to see a remodel of that current jail. They don't want a mega jail. They don't want a big jail. They don't see any purpose for this, that, it is terrible in there. They said it's moldy, there's not enough blankets, the food is terrible, it's overcrowded. They echoed all these problems, but none of them said, "Build a great big jail." It's like building a big, old business complex. You need to fill it, it'll be the same for the jail. You build a big jail, you'll need to fill it. I'm also concerned, and I don't know how many people voted yes or no on that originally, knowing where it was going to be. It was a question mark. Where was this jail to be? Well, it's on the bounty road. And it's on, that area is a wetland. That area is an archaeological site. That concerns me. It's surrounded by stinky dump sites. It's a terrible place to, I think, to probably have to live if you were in there for any length of time. It's also near, and nobody can tell me differently on this, with our current administration on a federal level, it's across the road essentially from ICE, Border Patrol. I don't know where our citizens and what we're facing with some of our citizens, but I would think that close to Border Patrol. It might just be useful to them to fill that right up. Don't know, just my concern. What about water usage? You build a great big thing, but you're going to have to use a lot of water, you know? I just see so many potentials for this that I don't see any good coming back. I would like to see us expand our division facility. That's what they showed me to share with you as well, and to see more mental health and alcohol and abuse substance treatment systems put into place. And again, I've never been in there, but they had, and this is what they wanted me to share and be their voice for them, because they couldn't make it tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Up next is Robert Lieb, followed by Jordan Lieb, and then Jacob Malloy.
Robert Lieb, I'm a Bellingham businessman, a Watcom County resident. Judge Rothen Rosenthal, a federal district court judge in Houston who just ruled against the cash bail system as unconstitutional, explains as follows. The cash bail industry, which includes local bond agents backed by multinational insurance giants, is a morally tainted enterprise that systematically violates the constitutional rights of America's most vulnerable citizens in the name of profit, with no discernible benefit to the public. Cash bail has fueled a politically influential, multi-billion-dollar industry, and the courts are relying on it, and more people who cannot afford it are getting locked up at an even greater rate. Does anyone in this room care about what is going on in this county, or are you just going to keep putting people in tiny boxes and extorting them for cash? If we allow the county to build their mega jail in Ferndale, we're only allowing them to continue the abuse that we are waging on our most marginal citizens. I attended a couple of stakeholders' meetings, and it's apparent that the plan is that there is no plan. No business case, no understanding of real costs, just a big piece of property and a moving target for a budget. What does the county think of the citizens' intelligence level? No bank would ever make a loan on a business case like this, so let's stick the stupid, uninformed citizens with a bill. Stupid is what we must be to allow such a poorly planned mega jail in this county. You've wasted so much time and money that everyone involved should be ashamed of themselves. Tick-tock, there's another grand. I'm convinced that our current system is only there to take care of the powerful and the privileged, and these people could give a damn about any of us. It's nothing to do with public safety, nothing to do with improving the jail conditions or helping the mentally ill. There's just a bunch of people getting rich off the unfortunate circumstances of others. The time to end this is now. Vote no for the jail and send the judges, prosecutors, and county executive packing. They've been here too long, and they're destroying far too many lives. I represent a group of internet entrepreneurs that actually care about this community. We are involved because the current system is responsible for the demise of my son, and we will never forget. The people in charge, nor will we ever forgive them. Our goal is to take away their shiny new toy and make them actually care about the people that pay their salaries. I really believe that their greed is what it's all about, so in actuality, nothing will change until they are forced to leave. We will be sharing dozens of stories that we've collected from citizens of this county and the abuses that they've suffered at the hands of the Watcom County judicial system on our new website, watcomcountyjail.com. We, the people, demand that you put an end to the abuse of our citizens, actually do something that reduces incarceration, helps the mentally ill and marginalized citizens, and keep them out of jail. Here's a hint: Drug addiction and mental illness is not a crime. They are illnesses that should be treated as such. It is your duty to start treating the citizens of this county the respect they deserve and get to work fixing the corrupt system that have been allowed to exist for far too long. I want to live in a community that takes care of the marginalized people and does not incarcerate them. Apparently, I made the wrong choice to have removed my family here. You are literally living in the dark ages and want to keep us there with their extortionist jail program.
Robert, your time is up. Thank you, Robert. Again, please, no applause. Jordan Lieb is next, followed by Jacob Malloy, and then Emily Merrill.
Thank you for the time I've been given tonight. I was on At Friday's Reducing Incarceration Task Force, or Council Discussion, about that. My father's right, it is a moving target. Your budget and everything about it doesn't represent anything that has been brought forward to you by the people. It's been brought forward to you since 2015 regarding a two-thousand-bed facility out in Ferndale that nobody agrees with. It doesn't make any sense. The draft before you for a new jail will be paid for the next three decades. It's a more polished version of a broken model that has been snowballing for three decades. So you're continuing a system that's been created from age-old techniques that doesn't work and nobody agrees with, and you're putting it on my generation. There's a growing mistrust for elected leaders because of issues being unresolved such as this, especially because a two-thousand-bed jail was put on a ballot in 2015. That's one thousand percent larger than what is currently being, who are currently being incarcerated in our current system. Why don't we implement great diversion programs so we know the facts about a working model, not what is currently broken? So I am a twenty-four-year-old from Bellingham. I've lived here my whole life, and for the record, this is my third time speaking before many of you. Many of you have heard my story and know that a for-profit pre-trial incarceration system preyed on my mentally ill brother, who was diagnosed with personality disorders. He ended his life nine months ago. I vow that I will make sure a better system is put in place through whatever means, is what I have to do for him and people who can't speak for him. My brother Connor was spending time in jail and being fined instead of giving medicine and care he desperately needed. Counsel, this is the system before you, and the current draft wishes to expand without reform. He was introduced to a broken, disconnected court system that labeled him a criminal instead of mentally ill, and in a turning point in his life, he was backed against a wall instead of guided towards success. This is the system the drafted document and jail tax wishes to expand that everyone's been working on for nine months. There is no solid reasoning or no solid budget put forward to actually change behavioral health or put forward actual programs that will keep people like him out of jail. It is just talk. He was given three felonies, and at a time of his suicide in the morning, I found him, he had $12,000 in fines from Alliance One that were gaining interest. This is the system that this draft before you will expand with no priority to fix this. I am not opposed to spending valuable, tax-paid resources and revitalizing the Watcom County Jail to a standard all stakeholders can agree to, as it is in despicable shape. The inmates deserve better, the community deserves better, and we need innovative programs to help those who wind up in our justice system find their way back to the community Building a box around the problems we should be fixing is backwards.
Thank you, Jordan. Next up, Jacob Malloy, followed by Emily Merrill, and then Yashia Van Leeuwen.
Hello? Okay, cool. Yeah, so I want to echo a lot of what everybody else is saying. I'm Jacob, I'm from Seattle, but I'm going to school at Western right now, and I'm also a member of Socialist Alternative. And I just want to kind of echo what some people are saying and also put it in a national context, which is that, you know, we're dealing with decades of a prison industrial complex that has grown, not shrunk. I don't know if any of you are acquainted with the idea of the new Jim Crow and these racialized, you know, racialized prison systems, but this is something that we, as a city, should not be a part of. We should not be spending a huge amount of money in investing in a new jail, which has been shown very conclusively to not make our community safer, but actually destroys and takes apart communities, and this is not an effective use of money. The last thing that I want to say, though, as well, is that if you do pass this, we're not going to take it quietly. And I think that it's going to, I think that it's important just to realize that, like, this is, this group of people in this room right now was put together in a day, right? Like, we knew about this yesterday. But if this is going to go forward, and this is going to go to a vote, we're going to make sure that people know all the facts about this, who voted for it, who voted against it, and we're going to make sure that this doesn't go through, even if it goes through today or when you vote on it. So I just want you to know that. It's not a threat, but it's just, keep it in mind.
It's a threat. Thank you. Next up is Emily Merrill, followed by Yashia Van Leeuwen, and then our last speaker will be Cora Cole. Make sure that button is pressed so it's glowing red, we can hear you up there. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So I wanted to talk about the new jail, or the discussion of the new jail with the county. One of the things that I did some reading, and one of the things that I found is that Watcom had, at least in 2013, an incarceration rate of about 20.21%, which is about 210,000. That's significantly lower than the average in the country, but it's significantly higher than the average in most industrialized nations, and it's significantly higher than the average, or it's higher than the average, at least according to Cascadia Weekly, than the average in the state of Washington. The other thing that Cascadia Weekly had to say is that when incarceration rules were loosened in Watcom County in 2006, there was a substantial increase in the number of people who were incarcerated, despite the fact that there had not been a substantial increase in incarceration during the decade prior. That, to me, implies that building an additional 180 permanent beds, which is what the proposal would do according to one of the public radio stations, or one of the radio stations in the area, seems to me to imply there would be a roughly two-thirds increase, given that the recurrent number is 260 beds, and the new number is 440 beds, roughly two-thirds increase, again, in the number of people incarcerated in Bellingham, or at least in Watcom, which would be an increase, a significant increase overall, and it would also, to me, imply that that's a fairly significant downside. It seems pretty obvious to me that we should not be building additional beds, additional beds in prison, in a context where we already have a higher incarceration rate than the average in the state, and when the incarceration rate is significantly higher than that in other industrialized nations, it seems to me that the only work we should be doing now is work to make sure the beds that currently exist are habitable and to make sure that people are not incarcerated. And it seems to me that the most important thing we can do to make sure people are not incarcerated in the immediate run is to not build more beds, because when we build more beds, people are incarcerated. I have no idea how much time I have left, but that's all I have to say, so thank you.
You have forty-eight seconds.
What was your, what's your name?
Emily, it's Emily Merrill. Next up is Yashia Van Leeuwen, and then our last speaker will be Cora Cole.
Hi, I'm also up here to speak about the new jail that's being built. America already has the highest prison population in the world, and it's, it is shrinking right now, but that's because of a decrease in crime, not because we're building less prisons. We have a real problem with overpolicing in this country, and the weight falls disproportionately on marginalized people, especially here, on Native people and Lumi Nation. We need to build, or when we build new jails, we make a bet backed up by millions of dollars in stranded assets if it does not get filled. And this is not a bet that I think the city of Bellingham should be making. We should bet instead in our citizens that they're going to do the right thing, and we should do the right thing by creating the kind of programs that stop crime instead of perpetuate the system that turns people into criminals. We need to reinvest in restorative justice and mental health programs, permanent housing for our homeless population, jobs programs, and things that focus on healing and helping nonviolent offenders instead of putting them back into the cycle of incarceration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker is Cora Cole.
Cora? Pleasure to see y'all. In an unsurprising turn of events, I'm here to talk about the proposed jail discussion. Good evening, city council members, mayor's office, community members. I'm Cora Cole. I'm a student up at Western. I wanted to address specifically an issue that's not just relevant for this jail, but for any restructure that happens of incarceration efforts in this county. The mayor is quoted by a news source published two hours ago as saying that the proposed jail would have thirty-six beds to be used for, and I quote, "behavioral issues." As lots and lots of people here have said, building beds inevitably leads to filling them. This has been discussed at length. Framing jail as a solution for anyone is deeply dehumanizing, but there are a couple of reasons that this is particularly true when we talk about behavioral issues. Behavioral issues explicitly or de facto historically refers to mental illness, addiction, and disability. Overwhelmingly, people who are already in the system are people of color, are indigenous neighbors, are psychiatrically disabled people, people who are disabled and homeless, who don't have places where they can have their behavioral issues in peace and quiet. They are overwhelmingly poor people, and those whose homes are unsafe because these people are facing abusive situations, particularly young people. Almost one-fourth of state prison inhabitants have mental illnesses. According to the Human Rights Watch report, last year, abuse of mentally ill people by prison and jail staff increases every year exponentially. Incarceration costs, on average, almost double for people who are being, or being partially accommodated for psychiatric conditions. Beds for behavioral issues means isolation from community support, means forcible restriction in medication, means unknown staff that cannot know the inmate as well as their support group, and who are frequently untrained. We need to be treated with homes. We need to be treated with social support networks. We need to be treated with destigmatization and treating with less use of force by police and less fear. Don't invest in broken systems. We need more support for disabled people, for mentally ill people. Don't use our bodies for profit. We have better ways to handle the issues that the mayor is so worried about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will conclude our fifteen-minute public comment period. I would just like to comment that the city of Bellingham is not in charge of the county sheriff's office, we're not in charge of the county jail, we're not in charge of the county's prosecutor's office. We can try to influence the process, and I think we do try to influence that process. We do focus on diversions and alternatives, pre-trial diversion, pre-trial release, and treatment. We have a rule against debt or jailing. No one in Bellingham goes to jail because they can't pay their fine. It's simply against our law to put someone in jail for an unpaid fine. I just want to say that because I think a lot of things you said were very important, and I think that there are people who need to hear them. We will go on now with our afternoon committee reports. Oh, by the way, there will be a jail issue later on the agenda you might want to stick around for. The first committee which met this afternoon is Public Works and Public Safety, and that committee is chaired by Councilman Terry Bornham.
Thank you, Michael. We had four items before the committee this afternoon. The first was a resolution for job order contracting process. The city of Bellingham uses a conventional design bid build process for nearly all the public works projects. The process works well for large projects, but can be cumbersome, time-consuming, and expensive for small-scale projects. Staff is seeking authorization to utilize a job order contract, the JOC, for public works projects. The JOC process is used by the federal and state agencies as well as larger municipalities. well as larger municipalities to quickly and efficiently procure and deliver small projects, but is particularly well-suited for renovations, repairs, and remodel projects. Staff provided an informational presentation on the JLC process at the 4/24/17 council meeting this afternoon. The committee recommended approval of the resolution, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion before us to approve a resolution authorizing job order contracting processes. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
The second item we had before us was just an informational item. It was an update to the water treatment plant dissolved air flotation pretreatment process. Staff presented an update on the pretreatment project. People are interested. They can go to BTB10 and see the presentation. The third item we had was a bid award for ES 522 12th and Mill Street Intersections Improvements, Bid 14B 2017. The 12th and Mill intersection improvements involve creation of a new street, including sidewalks, curb gutter, striping, and retaining walls and illumination. Intersection improvements at 12th and Mill will also be included. The city received two bids, which were publicly opened on April 26, 2017. The Carl Colchale Brothers, Inc. was the responsible bidder, who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $236,222, including any applicable Washington state sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $320,370,000. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion before us to approve the, rather, to award the bid for the construction of the 12th and Mill Street Intersection Improvements. Any discussion on this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Our last item was another bid award. It was for the East-North Street and East-Oregon Street Phosphorus Reduction retrofit bid, 7B-2017. The East-North Street and East-Oregon Street Phosphorus Reduction retrofit project involves construction of water quality facilities near East-North Street and East-Oregon Street in the Lake Watcom watershed by installing drainage, asphalt, plumbing, and performing earthwork. The city received seven bids, which were publicly opened on April 26, 2017. The Carl Colchale Brothers, Inc. was the responsible bidder, who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $788,668.50, including any Washington state sales or use tax. The engineer's estimate was $809,61. The committee, excuse me, the committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion to award the bid for the East-North and East-Oregon Street Phosphorus Reduction retrofits. Any further discussion of this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
End of committee report.
Okay, Terry, we'll go on to the next committee, which I believe was that Community Economic Development? I'm sorry, I'm out of order.
Lake Watcom.
Lake Watcom, okay. Lake Watcom Natural Resources Committee chaired by Dan Hamel.
Thank you. We had one item this afternoon. This was participation in Puget Sound Energy's Green Direct program. Green Direct is a new energy program for municipal customers that allows for purchase of renewable energy from a new wind farm via Puget Sound Energy. Currently, the city purchases renewable energy credits to offset carbon emissions from municipal electric energy use. The cost of these credits is in addition to the city's annual energy bill. The program provides the city with the opportunity to support construction of additional renewable energy, establish utility billing rates for up to 20 years, and extinguish the need to purchase credits since all city electricity will be from a renewable energy source. The Green Direct program requires a commitment at this time, and the wind farm is anticipated to come online in 2019. We had some pretty good discussion on this, and I would encourage folks that are interested in this particular subject to go back and take a look at this afternoon's discussion. Councilmember Barker had some great questions. The financial impact on this potentially could be, potentially savings if energy market increases by 2.5 percent annually, and that's the end of committee report.
Thank you very much. Our next committee was the Parks and Recreation Committee, which is chaired by April.
We only had one item for committee today. I was joined with both Councilmember Vargas and Murphy. It's a bid award for Central Avenue Pier Public Access Improvements Pier Construction Bid Number 11B 2017. This Central Avenue Pier is the pedestrian gateway to the waterfront district. This park promenade will provide a connection of the Watcom Waterway Park. This is the second phase of a multi-phase park development project, includes the infrastructure to widen the existing pier and provides pedestrian access to the grainery building. The first phase of work completed earlier this year included creosol piling, basuntite removal, and installation of new steel piping and shoreline habitat enhancement. The work included in the second phase includes building a new steel pier structure, new handrails, landscaping, park amenities, and other improvements to the existing pier. The city received one bid, which was publicly opened on April 20, 2017. Staff recommends this contract be awarded to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Ram Construction General Contractors LLC of Bellingham, in the amount of $1,141,959.38, which includes applicable sales tax. We had a unanimous recommendation to approve, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion to award the bid on the Central Avenue Public Access Improvements. Is there any discussion of this item?
Just so people understand, this is right by the grainery building, so you've seen the pilings go in, and now you're going to see the actual construction of, as you look above Maritime Heritage Park, it'll be a really nice shot to know where the new art sculpture will go. So it's pretty exciting. I think you'll see a lot of steel going in, but ultimately not allowing traffic once that's developed, and a great pedestrian walkway there. So it's, I think it's pretty exciting to see.
Anything further? Okay, all those in favor awarding this bid signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
End of committee.
Passes unanimously. End of committee. Thank you very much. Next committee was Community Economic Development. That's chaired by Councilmember Pinky Vargas.
Thank you, President. We had one item in front of us today. It was a resolution authorizing the 2017 HUD Annual Action Plan, and we did have a review, if anybody is interested. This is actually, for those of you who are interested in what we're doing around low-income housing in the city, the 2017 action plan explains where all of our money is going to, what housing we're working on, and the projects that are in process right now, and those that are upcoming, how much money we have left to spend, and what we have in reserve for upcoming projects. So they gave us a very good presentation, outlined all of these details. If anybody wants this, you can see this online. We do have our action plan posted. And after the review of that, the committee unanimously recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. We have a motion before us to pass this resolution authorizing the 2017 HUD Action Plan. Any further discussion of this item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Pinky. Okay, we will now go on to our final committee, which is Committee of the Whole. Committee of the Whole had several items before us. The first one was an annual report from the Commission Against Domestic Violence. The commission is jointly funded by both the city and the county, and it focuses on policies and best practices with regard to domestic violence. The services are delivered by other agencies. This has looked at the overall policy picture. And particularly, they reported they have a new effort which focuses on faith communities, to inform and engage and bring churches and other faith communities into the process by providing them with a toolkit of best practices, because they discovered that best practices for faith communities was often hard to find, and so they did that work for themselves, and working with various faith communities. They also talked about their lethality assessment program and their high-risk team. These are two ways of focusing on people who are at most at risk in domestic violence, and those who are at most at risk of offending domestic violence after there's been some encounter with law enforcement. They also finally, by the way, Susan Marks, the director of the commission, was here, and she also talked about their prevention programs, including a successful program with high school youth, and that program was so successful, out of five in the nation, the only one that was awarded to continue and expand that program going in the future, again, working with multiple partners and focusing on youth and prevention for domestic violence. That was for information only. The next item was a resolution to form a regional fire authority planning committee. The city of Bellingham Fire Department, and also Watcom County Fire Protection District Number Eight, desire to explore the formation of a regional fire authority, combining those two entities. A resolution is presented to the council, appointing two council members, which were, this afternoon, identified as Councilmember Terry Bornham and myself, Michael Lillquist, who would sit on the RFA Planning Committee, along with Mayor Kelly, and along with three Fire District Eight commissioners. They would be appointed by the District Board of Commissioners. These selected officials would then comprise the Bellingham Fire District Eight RFA Planning Committee. The idea is to explore the idea of forming a regional fire authority, to see whether it's a good idea or not, look at other practices. This policy board would then also oversee a steering committee of professionals and technical experts and people in the area to explore the idea more thoroughly. This is slated to be anywhere from a year to a year-and-a-half-long process. If indeed the recommendation was go for the regional fire authority, that matter would have to come to the vote of the public. So there is, however, a resolution to appoint those members, and I so move. We have a motion before us to pass a resolution to appoint Councilmember Terry Bornham and myself, Michael Lillquist, to the RFA Planning Committee. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Third item was a proposed jail facility use agreement. Watcom County is proposing to build a new jail facility, and they would like to fund it by, to be approved, voter 2/10ths of 1 percent sales tax measure. Mayor Kelly, Linville, and her staff have negotiated principal terms for an agreement, and this agreement will cover the financial aspects of that about measure and the capital funding for the jail. This afternoon, they presented the key terms of that proposed jail facility use agreement. No draft of the agreement was in our packet. A draft was discussed and presented at the Friday meeting that several people talked about earlier today. A city and county staff are still working together to negotiate certain specific provisions and working on final language for the agreement. At this point, this is for information only. The agreement is not before us to approve, although I believe the idea is that it might come before us to approve if there is a about measure proposed later this year. That was for information only. Is there any discussion on this item? Pinky?
If I may, I just wanted to address a couple of things around this jail thing. I didn't vote for the last proposal either. I don't believe any of us, oh, maybe Jean. But one of the things that I said before, when this in front of us two years ago, is that we need to plan for our future, not for our past. And I want to say that I am incredibly dedicated to decreasing incarceration. I don't want to put people in jail either. But no matter what, we are going to have to have a jail, because there are some people that there is no form of treatment, and there are some things that are punishable. The reason that I volunteered to be on this task force was that I wanted to ensure that jail alternatives were not just included, but that they were how we do business. This is how we move forward. And our current jail has no beds for mental health treatments, no place for treatment, or any counseling whatsoever. There is no place and no humane support for the people who are currently incarcerated, and that is atrocious. And these are the things that I don't particularly want to build a new jail, but I don't want people, whether they are incarcerated or working in that current conditions, to have to be in those conditions. So if we do this by looking out for the people who will eventually be incarcerated, if we give them an opportunity for treatment, if we are funding these things, if we are looking for jail diversions, we have an opportunity for change. So there is that built into this, and, you know, when we walked into that, that wasn't a priority nine months ago. That wasn't a priority two years ago, when this was first put in front of us. So I want to say that the people who are on this dais have been very strong advocates to ensuring that this is a priority for this city. And we can't, we can't control how the jail is operated on a day-to-day basis. However, one of the things that we were able to come to in this negotiation was the fact that we have an advisory committee, and that means that that advisory committee is accountable, or, sorry, the sheriff is accountable to that advisory committee. These are things were never proposed before, and it's certainly not things that they wanted to give us. But because we kept going and we kept talking about how important it is for transparency to be involved, for us to be able to have some say on what's happening, what's happening to the people of Bellingham when they're incarcerated. So these things would never have been possible without this. So I do feel like we have moved quite a bit forward, even though it might not feel it, and even the fact that we recommended a smaller jail. That is the county council's decision on what size this jail is going to be, but the fact that this city council was very strong advocates on a smaller jail, I think, needs to be noted. This is not, this is not a panacea. We know we can't fix everything, but we have to start with the things that we can fix. And having, ensuring that there are proper programs, ensuring that everyone is receiving the benefits that they possibly can, that's the representation that I was trying to bring to that committee. So I just, I know a new jail is not the direction I want to go either, but I will say that I will, I will support a new jail if it means that people are properly taken care of, they're given whatever advantage they can to make whatever changes in their lives, and they get the proper amount of treatment that they have. Currently, we have nothing in our jail. So I just want to say that if we do go forward, that I feel like some of the steps that we have made from the city side have been very, very important. So thank you for bearing with us through this.
I'm calling Councilmember Hamel, and then Bornham. I'll cut to you, Terry. Kelly?
Thank you. I wanted to point out that the mayor and I serve on the incarceration prevention and reduction task force, and have served on that body for over a year and a half. We take very seriously the, what I would characterize as the epidemic of opiate use and abuse in this community. Watcom County is number three and number four in hospitalization treatments for heroin overdose and opiate, like OxyContin overdose. We recognize the need for diverting people out of the system, including people with mental health illness or co-occurring substance use disorder. Over the last year, we've reduced our misdemeanor population, the Bellingham misdemeanor population, by 25 percent. That's largely due to booking restrictions that we were forced to come up with some type of diversion program, and we did that through Friendship Diversion Services. And so now we are able to use electronic home monitoring devices for folks so they can keep going to work, they can keep picking up their kids at school, they can keep their housing, and they can stay in the community and serve their time that way. What I have concerns about with this, I have several concerns about this proposal, two of them I just want to bring to light tonight. One of them is, I'm not sure how much that planning committee took under consideration the recommendations from the incarceration prevention and reduction task force. I know it's in there as an item, and I know that where appropriate, that those considerations will be implemented. Where appropriate, to me, is not strong enough language. There's another program called Grace. This program has not gotten off the ground yet. This is ground-level response and coordinated engagement. I'm working with the hospital, the mayor's office, the Watcom County Health Department. I'm working with the hospital, the mayor's office, the Watcom County Health Department, and Opportunity Council to look at, how do we, how do we treat folks that are frequent users of hospital, the emergency department in the hospital, jail, frequently come into contact with fire or police? I've looked at models in Everett, Shoreline, I went and visited police chiefs, judges, and then Everett, Shoreline, Seattle, and Spokane to get a better understanding of how those models work in those communities. And this is, this is statewide. This is, these issues are not just in Bellingham, but they're in those communities as well. And so I want to understand how, since that program is not underway, we don't have anything to measure at this point, and we barely have anything to measure when it comes to our electronic home detention services. We don't have a years, full years' worth of data. So that's very concerning to me. And the items that I brought up this afternoon that I have concerns with is that we're being asked to, to fund, Bellingham is being asked to fund the jail at a higher rate than our actual use. And someone who owns a business, I watch every penny that goes out the door and every penny that comes in the door, and I might be a little more paranoid about those things because of that, but I feel like that's, it's appropriate to, especially since we're paying for this with taxpayer dollars, that we, that we spend appropriately and we fund this appropriately. The proposed facility is 440 beds, plus or minus 3%, with 36 mental health beds, so that's 489 beds. The proposal two years ago was 521, so this is a little bit of a drop, but the proposal last year did not include mental health beds. So a lot of concerns still about this one. I just wanted to communicate that to the folks in the gallery that came tonight. Thank you.
Terry?
Yeah. I kind of have to agree with what Dan has to say about this. I want to thank people tonight for, there was some very thoughtful testimony that came forward out of here. I truly believe necessity provides the greatest motivation in innovative change, and we've seen that. Dan highlighted, when we were forced to, and we didn't make change with our system until we were forced to, we reduced incarceration by 25%. 25% because we were forced to. I worked 20 years with juvenile court administration, and when I started, the juvenile jail, basically, was at capacity. They were looking at having to build a new facility or do something different. We switched over to a restorative justice program. I was trained in restorative justice, and to become a trainer with that. We, as our population in those 20 years increased incredibly in Bellingham, the population of the dissension center, out of necessity, dropped from highs of 50 to into the teens, and I just talked to somebody the other day, and they were down in single digits at times, because they're finding ways to work with populations with alternatives. If we, I'm concerned of the size, again, that that has not been addressed in this, because I'm concerned with the mentality of if they build it, they will come mentality. If we build small, plan small, and plan for alternatives, then we have to find ways to make it work. If we have big spaces, we don't need to do that anymore. We can forget about spending the initial money upfront. And that's what it, as I watched it happen in the county before, with the juvenile system of when state funds were cut back on certain things, they cut the preventative kinds of programs. And that's the easy one to go when we have room to house people. So I'm still, there's great work that was done on this, and there's a lot of improvement on the funding basis and others, but I've still got some real problems on that size and that they haven't addressed that, and they haven't addressed the work that was, the great work. And there was, I think, some really good work, Dan, on the incarceration prevention and alternative, that task force. And we haven't taken that serious yet, so I've got some real concerns that I'm going to have to be looking at before I can go along with it. So that's where I'm at with it.
April?
Well, Mayor, I do want to thank you for keeping the conversations going, and Pinky and Jean for serving on that. I know it takes a lot of time, but we haven't agreed to anything except for, we finally got to some percentages that were at least a little bit more fair than they were before. And even in listening to you speak, I haven't heard you commit to anything yet except for getting everybody on board throughout the county and providing some real leadership on what's going to be fair to the city, because originally, we weren't going to get any of that second one-tenth of a percent, and I know Chief Cook was like, this isn't going to work, we're not, and Judge Love as well. We won't be able to fund the things that we're going to do that are going to be very proactive. So what I did appreciate today is that you had agreed that staff would come back with some real good comparisons for us to look like. What would it look like if we went out for our own one-tenth of a percent? What would that be versus what is the amount we're going to get back from this? And then also, what would it look like if we had to go out and fund our own jail, our own system, with our own diversions compared to what it is now? So I think there's going to be a lot greater conversation, and I do appreciate that you're bringing back facts to us so we can make a stronger stance. I want to thank who reminded me of the location, because when this first discussion came up, I, I really had issues with the location, and I've really been trying to work through that for myself. Bus, for sure. I mean, we've worked so hard to get better busing and better access, and again, one of, we just had a discussion today of adverse childhood experiences, which is what we put in our comprehensive plan, so we would understand what those are, and we could build resilient programs around them, being a trauma-informed community. Domestic violence is one of them. And having, having a parent that's incarcerated, knowing that myself, my father has a felony, and I know exactly how that impacted my life over and over again, and really actually contributed to more adverse childhood experiences. But thank goodness, there was a community around me, there was people around me that were willing to kind of, I always imagined like a little shim here and a little shim here as I was growing up, that people in the community were kind of helping keep me balanced. So I am proud of this council for going beyond just the jail situation. I think it was within the first month that I was on council, within the first three months, we ended up passing Bound the Box. So if you're not aware of that, we are a city that no longer asks you to check the box and say that you have some type of criminal conviction unless you're going to be working with a vulnerable population. We will ask you that question later on, and you'll have a chance to tell us what that situation is, and then have the chance to appeal to if we choose not to hire because of that, but it would, it would certainly take some real specific things. I would also ask this group that, don't, don't just get stuck on, on this particular issue, because in watching the growth in Bellingham, we're setting up a lot of our children for failure. We are pocketing poverty left and right, and we know that the more integrated, social-economically a community is with housing and living together, the more upward mobility there is for everybody. And so if you're going to be really concerned about this conversation, please be very concerned about housing, zoning, all of the things that we need to do to make sure that our built environment is really representative of how we want to be in the future. Because we can fix this, but if we don't fix all of the things that are contributing to that institution, it's not going to do much. It'll make some changes, but it won't do much. So please stay engaged with all those conversations.
Roxanne?
I heard a few of you advocate for the Lummi Nation. I appreciate that. They're my relatives and my friends. I'm also always happy to remind people, there are two tribes in Watcom County. I'm from Nuxak, eighth-generation tribal member. Can you turn your mic up? I just wanted to say that our tribe is going through so much right now with major improvements. We have really great chemical dependency programs, we have behavioral health programs. I'm the youth director from my tribe, and I work with an after-school program, a full-time summer program. We have statistics that are showing that kids that go through my program, and then also through other educational services that our tribe offers, will never try substances in their life. Okay, we're doing all of this work as a culture to be better members of the community. With all of that in mind, and with all of the better leadership that we're providing, there still are times that we have to send people to jail. Our tribe has a contract with the current jail. My desire is that the tribal members that we're sending from Lummi and from Nuxak will have a better and much safer jail, that our workers would have a much safer jail for everybody who has to work there. I think this is what our culture needs, and this is what our community deserves, is a safer and better place with much better services to address all of the emerging needs from our culture and everybody's culture.
Real quick, having served on the committee with Pinky and the mayor and the staff, everybody did a great job. One of the things that happened in our first meeting is we were not to discuss jail size. I can tell you that Todd Donovan, Barry Buchanan are very concerned about that 440 number, and I would think that's not going to be the final number that comes to us when it's time for us to move on this. So I, I think there's room there. But to think of where we were last time this was up, and to where we are now, it's a big difference. I know there's more negotiations to be done and more work to be done, but we're a heck of a lot better than they were before. But the size issue is going to be determined across the street, and that's where they're going to make that decision, whether, in my opinion, whether this thing goes forward or not. Because if they don't pick the right size and it's not supported, then game is over.
I'm going to get a few comments myself. They're going to overlap and repeat some of what's been said. To me, it's important that people understand what this jail facility use agreement is not, okay? It's not the incarceration reduction task force. It's not focusing on what we can do to divert people into therapeutic court systems. It's not focusing on what we can do for pre-trial release. It's, it's not about that. There's a separate process going forward for that, and those need to be funded by the county, and they are being funded to a certain extent by us, the city. It's also not the, what I think is the first real deep look at what Watcom County needs for its jail system. That's now being done with the help of the Vera Institute, a national institute, that the county's brought in to analyze their court system. That investigation by those outside experts is ongoing right now. This jail facility use agreement is not about that piece either, but that's still going forward. It's also, as we've said, it's not about the size of the jail, and it's not about the location of the jail. I don't like the location of jail. I've told people the county why I don't like that. We, as a council, over 18 months ago officially notified the county that we thought the jail was too large and gave them another number. This number is actually pretty close to the number we gave them that long ago. But this jail facility use agreement is not about that. If they decide to move the jail to a different location and make a smaller jail, the facility use agreement works with that agreement as well. It's kind of written to move with the jail in a certain sense. It has to do with how the costs are spread out. One of the advantages of what's been negotiated here by Mayor Kelly and other people is that because we're not being asked to pay an overly large share, we're now being asked to pay something closer to our fair share, and we are able to keep the city's portion of the revenue, we would actually have money to fund all of these programs now that we don't have now. Hundreds of thousands of dollars might be ours to run the diversion programs, the therapeutic court programs, the Grace program that Councilman Hamel referred. We'd have funding for those alternatives that we don't need to spend on jail, money we currently don't have. So if the jail is built, there is an upside, at least for the city of Bellingham, because we won't need to spend all that money on the jail. We've reduced the number of people going to the jail, our per diem costs are down, we'll keep them down. So there is an upside to this agreement that doesn't lock us into the downsides of an oversized jail. So I think that's what I'm looking at right now. This item was for information only, that facility, ah, sorry. You've been so patient, Kelly. Kelly?
Well, I was going to start, but now some of my comments are a little stale. Michael, can you turn me down?
Excuse me, is that microphone up there still on, the little red dot?
Okay, I feel better now. First of all, when Brian Beggs was here talking to all of us, from Spokane, he used to be an attorney in Bellingham, and he said, and the Vera Institute has confirmed, that our goal for our criminal justice system, which includes a jail, needs to be reduction in incarceration and recidivism. That is what we're trying to do. This jail funding work group was put together by the county, and, and we had three things that we needed to do. So it wasn't really the jail use agreement, that wasn't what the charter or the requirements were for this jail work group. It was to look at the cost of a facility. Now, I think that's kind of hard to do if you're not looking at the size, but we were absolutely told not to look at the size. So, funding mechanism for the facility, which is scalable depending on how big it is, however big it is, the funding mechanism could work for any size jail, and the allocations, which the county is not taking on 78%. The percentages will be bigger or smaller depending on how many people we're putting in jail. So that's not written in stone either. The good news about only having those three requirements for this kind of anomaly in the jail discussion is that now, we voted on Friday to disband this group. So now the focus will be on the incarceration task force. In addition to Dan and I, Darlene Peterson, who's our court clerk, has been there, and she's done a great job of getting information out to all the people that are sitting on that group, I don't know how many it is, but it's a lot, about the alternatives that the city is using and how successful they've been. And that whole group can't look at the size of a jail either, and to me, unless you know what your criminal justice system's going to be providing, you can't really determine the size of the jail. But that isn't how the county set this up. So I think all of us that have been involved have tried to focus on that goal of reduced incarceration and recidivism, and try to look at it through that lens. So I'm continuing to put my efforts, I know Dan is, and I know Darlene is, and Peter comes to most of the meetings too. So we're continuing to put our, our, our energy into the alternatives, because that's how this started, and I think that it does have to be included in how we finish. But I would suggest that everyone that has concerns, and we've heard a lot of them tonight, and I agree with some of the concerns, and I maybe have a question about others, but the county council is the one that's going to make this final decision. We are going to look at what kind of an agreement that we can negotiate, but we're not done doing that yet. So I think the county council really needs to hear from all the residents in Watcom County, everybody who is concerned about this, whether it's the process, or the size, or the services, or how the two groups work together, or any of that, and need to give a lot of information and input to your county council members. I told the, I told the county council members that are on the jail task force that on Friday, when they were questioning who was going to do oversight and who was going to make sure that, you know, the intent was, you know, brought forward, and I said, well, you're the oversight, just like our council is the oversight for the city about how our policies are being implemented and what we're achieving. It's the same thing for the county. So I would say, please give your input to the county council so they hear the same information and concerns that they've heard from all of us and that we heard tonight from our, from our residents.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Okay, we'll go on. The last item for committee of the whole was an ordinance authorizing $23 million, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, thirty-one dollars and fifteen cents in reappropriations. This was for goods and services ordered in 2016 but unpaid at year end. Basically, we passed this ordinance a couple weeks ago, but they left out a $12 million single line item. This is an amendment to add that $12 million loan back into our bookkeeping. This afternoon, the committee of the whole recommended approval of the ordinance, and I so move.
Second?
Any discussion on this? Who got the second? Pinky got that second. All those in favor for approving the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Hold a new business, no, actually, approval of minutes. I believe we have one set of minutes to approve. I can't find the minutes.
April 24.
April 24?
Move approval.
Ah, here they are.
Second?
We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 24th. Are there any changes? Nope. All those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
With one abstention, it passes 6-0 with Hamel abstaining. Okay, now we'll go on to hold a new business. Well, there's mayor's report. Can you wait for mayor's report?
I think some of this is for, for my business. I'm appointing people in.
Okay, can you?
Okay, can you turn your mic on?
No.
No?
Yes.
Please raise, use your outside voice then, your classroom voice.
In older or new business, there were two things that I thought we should update the council on that pertain to activities that the council's going to be dealing with. And the first one was the homeless shelter. So as I'm sure you all know, the port declined to partner with us on the location for the homeless shelter and decided to use their option to buy the property. I'm not, seven hundred and sixty-five or seven hundred and...
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six thousand dollars. And so obviously, if, if you've listened to Teresa, I'm yours, when she was up here, what she was saying lines up a little bit with the, with the direction we're going to look at what to do now. And I'm going to let Rick talk about it, because we did talk to the Lighthouse Mission. They're still willing to partner with us, but we're going to have to make some adjustments based on the fact that that location, that size of a location, that area of a location is not available to us now. So Rick, do you want to?
Okay, yes. Members of the council, and just in regards to the port exercising its option, the city will be preparing and pursuing transfer of the site to the port as soon as possible. We will likely have to hold a public hearing and follow limited surplus in order to be able to move that property along, and we'll follow up on that. Although it is disappointing on the outcome, the city and its program partner, the Lighthouse Mission, remain committed to establishing a low barrier, easy access shelter to meet the substantial needs in the community. However, it is going to take more time, and in the interim, we want to evaluate different options that might provide some degree of relief. And we've asked the Lighthouse Mission to reevaluate their proposed service delivery model, to see if we're able to stretch the parameters to either smaller facilities, or multiple facilities, or other uses that could provide in the near term and the very near term, some relief to address this issue. Staff and the mission will be working together to reassess these proposed programs, and we'll develop locational criteria based on them, on what the mission is able to do to meet our needs. Once we have those criteria, we'll probably certainly be returning to brief council on the criteria we'll use to evaluate potential sites to accommodate future use. We'll also provide increased awareness for our community members in terms of sites that have been considered. One of the things that I'm sure you experienced were folks kept resuggesting sites over and over that we had vetted, considered, and were either off the table or not viable for a variety of reasons. Based on some information we've discovered in San Francisco, we found a good way of presenting that to the public and keep them posted as the discussion moves forward, and perhaps that'll make people have increased awareness of the process we go through. In looking forward then, we anticipate in the next month perfecting the criteria and locational requirements. Location requirements are how close in proximity to the existing facilities the mission needs to be. The mission will also come back with different methods they might have to address that population, and we'll have a chance to evaluate that. And then we'll conduct in that service area that they've identified, that area physically they could serve, a, a site analysis and search to see if we could find properties that are available that could meet that end. So I guess the bottom line is, we look for things in the near term. We're looking to see if we can stretch to find different ways of providing the service in, in shorter order and perhaps accommodate some of the realities of site location. And we'll come back to you as we know more, and we'll be vetting those criterions and locational standards we'll be using.
And I think the other part of it is that there's a lot of talk about the site and the shelter aspect of this, the housing aspect. We, I, I think we haven't educated the public enough in the services that we're committed to, and I think this has been pointed out with the public testimony today on, on the jail, but also in the, in the shelter arena, I'm committed, as the mayor, to providing services and not just a bed, or a mat on the floor, or even just a tiny house, or just an apartment, because not everyone can live independently. And that is one of the reasons that I'm glad we're partnering with the Lighthouse Mission and our other nonprofit partners, is they have been successful in moving people through and out of the homeless, the homeless condition to economic independence and self-sufficiency. And that's our goal. We have to keep, you know, our, our, you know, our eye on the goal. And that's the goal. It's not just to have a cot for everybody so they can get out of the cold. Now, that's part of our goal for some people, but it has to be more than that. So we'll also be talking about how the services blend in with the facility or facilities that we're looking at. It's most likely going to be smaller, most likely not going to have the outdoor space that we were hoping, though that is going to still be one of our criteria, conceivably going to be more expensive and affect more people by its, its siding. So those are all kind of the downsides, so we're going to try to mitigate those downsides to get something that serves the interests both of the clients and the community, both the residents and the, and the businesses. So I'll say my second one, Michael, for mayor's report.
Roxanne?
Just to support this a little more, one thing that I've been seeing complaints about is that we're partnering with the Lighthouse Mission. And one thing that I wanted to make clear is, as I understand it, they were the only partner that came forward. They were the only willing partner that wanted to do this work with us. And so I just appreciate the Lighthouse Mission. Also want to make it clear that this is a low-barrier shelter. It's not with the religious background. It's low barrier for easy entry into these services without the common requirements that might come from other services that they provide.
Yeah, I think that that is an important point to make, because I think many of us got over that hump, to understand that there is no requirement to participate in any kind of religious activities in order to stay at the shelter or get services. And also, other service providers other than the Lighthouse Mission will also have access through this facility to the residents that are staying there. So, so we're, I think we're, we're really clear about that. And having said that, of course, the basis for the Lighthouse Mission is, is the Christian religion. So we don't want to step on their toes, but to be very honest and straightforward, they don't want to step on our toes either, because they know that we're not going to be able to help as many people unless we work together and respect the limitations on each other's activities. So I, I feel comfortable with that too, Roxanne.
April? I had asked Brian earlier about, we had recently passed a decrease on the current rent, since we were taking that into our possession on the site that the port has chosen to purchase. And it was substantial for like eighteen months. It was going to be, I think, more than four thousand dollars less than they were currently paying, in earnest of thinking that this would help them collect the monies to move. So my, my concerns are, we've already passed that, but I'm wondering if it's in a place where we could stop it? If it's already been, has it already been given to them a new lease agreement?
The contracts are already signed.
They're already signed.
But once they, they, we transfer the property and they pay us the seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, then that will be, after that contract's up, that will be up to them. Because we won't be managing the property anymore.
Just knowing that they, they weren't really sure where the monies were going to come from. They didn't have them available. So I don't know how long that process is going to take, but maybe we could, I'm assuming we're going to work with them.
The money is available.
Okay, so that'll be very quick. We won't be losing. Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, we're not, yeah, we're, we're getting, we were getting what we had gotten in the past. So while we reduced their rent, we did not reduce what the city was receiving from the property. So as long as we own the property, we'll get the same rent we always did, and as soon as the port takes it over, then that will be their, their deal.
All right. There was some questions that had come through, so I appreciate answering them, so.
Mr. Seppeler, you said, you used the word stretch in the, in the criteria. I'm wondering if, if in that pursuit of flexibility, there might be ideas like, well, the only advantage of location for the lighthouse is they could have kind of administrative/operational overlap if they're close enough. Well, if we find a place that's further away, they won't have that. But maybe part of the stretch is recognizing, okay, now there'll be increased administrative and operational overhead, but maybe that's okay. Maybe we could cover that. So is that the sort of stretch you're talking about?
Yes, we're looking for re-combinations of service delivery, both in size and location, to give us a greater chance of success. That we think it's extraordinarily limiting in terms of what we'll be able to find that's currently going to meet the model they have now. And we're seeing if there's a way. We've challenged them to stretch and see if they could find different ways of providing that service delivery, perhaps a little further afield or more dispersed. There is an operational cost for them. And as you recall, not only were one of the few folks who stepped forward to offer the service, they were going to raise a substantial amount of cash to build the building, and they were covering a substantial amount of the operating cost. The city was only paying for the overnight services and provided the land long-term for that. So I think in a sense, they're bringing a lot to the table. We'll continue our discussions, but we can't, you know, the, the conclusions we could reach if we went with the same criteria and the same location is there's no sites. That'll work. So we have to find a different way of making this work, and time is of the essence. I should also note, while we have the opportunity, we are probably going to come back to you at your next meeting to look at a neighborhood program for the existing drop-in shelter to help with security in that area. That is a stopgap method we're using now, and there are potential for impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. We have a fairly good program model that could be done that would help by providing additional staffing. It does self-policing in the two-block area around the mission, and it's been proven successful elsewhere. But they need a little help to get started on that. So we'll bring that for your consideration.
And you've probably seen that there's been creation of an off sidewalk area. So we're, we're trying to reduce the impact because this was going to be going on for a while anyway, but this was the initiative of the Lighthouse Mission to invest in this low-barrier shelter ahead of, ahead of when we could do anything. So they understand that it can't, that it is an impact in the neighborhood too.
Okay, anything else under old and new? We'll go on now to a report of the executive session. There were four items during our executive session. The first one was a litigation matter in the case of Right Out versus City Bellingham and David Frick. Staff provided information on a litigation matter. Under the Bellingham Municipal Code, section four point one, six point oh eight oh, and under state law, an employee whose actions are intentional or willful and wanton, and were not performed in the scope of the employee's duty, is not entitled to be held harmless and demnified or defended by the city in a suit for damages that results from the employee's actions. The city council is responsible for determining whether the actions of an employee that gives rise to a suit warrant, defense, and indemnification. I would like to make a motion to find, to redefining that the actions of former employee David Frick, as alleged in this lawsuit, were intentional, willful, wanton, and not within the scope of, of his official duties as a city employee, and that the city therefore will not provide him with a hold harmless indemnification or legal defense in this matter.
Second.
I have a motion to second. That is to approve this finding with regard to defense of a former employee. Is there any further discussion of this? Mr. Fado, are we good? Okay. All those in favor of approving this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. The second item was a collective bargaining strategy session dealing with Fraternal Order of Police. Staff provided information regarding ongoing labor relations bargaining strategy. Direction was given, but no action was taken. The third matter was similar, collective bargaining strategy session regarding Teamsters Local Two Thirty-One. Again, staff provided information regarding labor relations bargaining strategy. Direction was given, but no action was taken. The fourth item was an added matter on potential litigation, potential, potential property acquisition. Staff provided information on this matter to the council. It was for information discussion only, and no action was taken. We're now on to the mayor's report. Kelly?
Okay, I'll do the appointments first. One is just for information, appointment of Beth Boyd to the Bellingham Watcom County Commission Against Domestic Violence. We had that report today, so appreciate what the, they do, and appreciate being able to appoint people. The second one I need your approval on, that is the mayor's appointment of Jean-Paul Van Meegum. Meeghem? Anybody know?
Meeg.
Meeghem. M.D. to the Transportation Commission.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion to approve Jean-Paul Van Meegan to the Transportation Commission. Any further discussion? April?
I'm interested in what the current gender mix is now on the Transportation Commission.
I think we just appointed a professor from Western who is a woman.
Okay.
And, but, and I, we had an opportunity potentially change the mix a little bit, but I still believe that we need to appoint the best people, and give them two people of equal ability.
Yeah.
I like to mix the gender and, and the ethnicity and everything up, but that's where we are right now.
Have, have, since this is, it's for quite a while now, it's been more male-dominated. Have we thought of different ways to communicate? Because there's just as many qualified females out there, but maybe we're going, we're doing the same thing over and over again on how we're communicating out this position. And so for the upcoming ones, finding different ways to communicate out?
Sure. We can look at something else. We've certainly done that with FIRE.
Yeah, yeah, and we're successful.
And we were successful.
Several new women hires, so I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. He is unanimously approved in his appointment. Consent agenda.
Wait.
Oops, sorry, I'm sorry. There's more.
I know you want to go home, Michael. It's only five after nine. The other thing that I've talked to several of you about this is, in the next two years, the home fund, the housing levy is going to be coming up for a renewal. We know how important it's been to our community so far. And one of the things that I would like to discuss with providers and users is the continuum of housing that we have in Bellingham, where our gaps are, and, and use the needs of the city and the city residents as part of how we determine what a new levy might look like. And I've talked to Dan about it, because I know he was instrumental in, in working on the, the last one. But I would like it to use that Community Solutions Work Group model that I've used. It's been very successful in identifying different issues, because a lot of people are around the table. It's not to determine a site for the shelter. I know there was some concern about that. It's not to do a specific thing necessarily, but it's just to look at the continuum of housing in our city and where, where we need to, to really focus and concentrate. So with that, I obviously would like a couple of council members to sit on with me, and, and April's already volunteered. But you guys work that out.
I'm already seeing a rush to join this, Dan.
I was going to say, I can't, I can't imagine that.
So this would be one of your Community Solutions Work Group. It would have stakeholders, experts, advocates in the community, and you'd like to include two, at least two.
Well, end users. I mean, that's part of, part of what has been missing from some of these is the actual end user of the, the housing. And, and so what's, what's pertinent to the people that, that are either looking for housing, have found housing in our community, care about, you know, or the impacts potentially of what we have. So these are very short, like, I call them hit, no.
Hidden room?
SWAT teams. They're only like six meetings. They're not long. They look at all the information that we've already generated. So we're not generating big studies or new bound volumes of information, because we have a lot of information. And sometimes we don't, we just don't use it, or we don't update it. So this is kind of looking at what we have, looking at how successful we've been with our first levy, determining some criteria for, you know, going back out to the voters again, if that's what the council decides to do. And then having some recommendations and a support of a group of people who might be interested in this if it goes to the ballot.
And so the focus would be on our housing levy, and then issues around its effectiveness going forward in the past?
Right. And it will be talking about the other forms of money that we use, which, you know, obvious. We use state money and the federal money that we can hopefully still get. get.
It might still be there.
We use our general fund, and we use our housing levy. I went to the opening of, the blessing of the farmworker housing last week, and the woman from the bank that was sitting right behind me said how unique Bellingham was of all the communities that she works in, because we're the only one that has a housing levy, which I actually didn't realize myself. And she said, "People look to Bellingham as being more innovative and more kind of progressive on looking at how to look at our housing. And then we think of the lack of affordable housing that we have in our own community, and you wonder what's going on in other communities."
Seattle has a housing levy, and their problem's even worse than ours in some ways.
I wonder why she said that then? Maybe we were one of the first.
Well, they're also way bigger. So I see two volunteers, Councilmember Hamill, Councilmember Barker, to join the mayor's Community Executions Work Group. Is that okay with everyone else? A little bit envious, but go ahead. I see no objection to that, so they're yours.
Okay, thank you very much, and that's the end of my report.
Okay, now consent agenda.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second for Mr. Hamill to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Final consideration of ordinances, of which we have three, and they all have big, long numbers in them.
Agenda Bill 21593, in ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending the 2017-2018 adopted budget appropriating $23,854,031 additional expenditures from estimated ending reserve balances in various funds to pay for goods and services ordered before the end of 2016 but unpaid at year-end closing.
Move third and final.
Second.
Roxanne moved, Terry seconded. Roll call, please.
Dan Hamill?
Aye.
Jean Knutson?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
Terry Bornammon?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven zero. Agenda Bill 21594, in ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending the 2017-2018 adopted budget appropriating $12,944,281 and 92 cents additional expenditures from estimated ending reserve balances and outstanding revenues in various funds to pay for goods and services authorized but not committed on purchase orders by the end of 2016.
Move third and final.
Second.
We have a motion before us. Roll call.
Jean Knutson?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
Terry Bornammon?
Aye.
Dan Hamill?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven zero. Agenda Bill 21595, in ordinance of the City of Bellingham, Washington, amending the 2017-2018 adopted biennial budget, reconciling the differences between estimated 2017 beginning reserve balances and actual 2017 begin reserve balances, and placing the differences in the ending reserve balances.
Move third and final.
Second.
We have a motion before us. Roll call.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
Terry Bornammon?
Aye.
Dan Hamill?
Aye.
Jean Knutson?
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven zero.
Thank you. Is there any further business for the Bellingham City Council? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.